Madam Chair, you would be right. It's one of the information I've heard from board members about trying to make sure that we keep our board constantly informed about what's going on. And I know you do a great job yourselves already researching all this, but what we felt like it was important for us to do is to have our curriculum department, Scotty Crowe, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, will lead this along with his team, Gillian Gregory, Stu Greenberg, Michelle Gell, so they can talk to you about what will happen with the changes in school grading, just kind of looking at the data, where we could be as a district. And when we looked at this, we saw right away that we could have as many as one-third of our schools lose school grades. And I think it's important for the community to understand, that's even if they performed at the same level that they did the year before. So if they kept at the same level, even made some improvement, you could still, because of the changing of the difference, changes that you're going to see. But I'll let Mr. Crowe go ahead and start this, and I appreciate the boards listening to this and asking any questions that you might have of our entire staff.
Okay. Thank you Superintendent Potts, Madam Chair, School Board Members. We do appreciate the opportunity just to take a few minutes with you this evening and share some of the recent changes. When I mean recent, literally in March, some of the new changes to the school, state school accountability formula. That's, as we know, the school grade criteria. So we'd like to keep you informed and share that information with you. And I think out of the, we've had the school accountability, school grade system, something like 13 years. I think it's changed 12 of the 13 years. So you've had this presentation over the years, but we're here to share with you the most recent updates, yes?
Mr. Crowe, if I could ask, before you get started, is this a moving target this session, two, still, yes or no?
The March State Board meeting, we were, there were some new grading criteria, grading provisions that have just become, you know, come aware to us, to the districts throughout the state. And that's what we'll share with you tonight. And we think that's what will stand now for this school year, the 12-13 school year. We think that's exactly what we're, the target that has moved, we think that's where it is today.
So what we're talking about here is the 2012-2013 school year, this could change again?
Correct. Last year, I think there were something like 40 changes. This year, I think only something like 20. And Ms. Gregory will talk about that in just a minute. So we'll talk about some of those most impactful changes, though we know there were over 20 this year.
I just want to make sure we understand the timeframe and what we're specifically talking about, and whether it's a still moving target.
2012-2013. Mm-hmm. The good news is historically, traditionally, our schools, our principals, our teachers, especially our students, have responded well. And we have risen to the occasion, if you will, when the bar has been reset or moved, we have responded well. But as you can imagine, with some of the changes that we'll talk about tonight, some of these are quite impactful as it relates to school performance, student performance data, school grades. And we do anticipate that there could be some possible changes and impact to that. The writing proficiency scores, proficiency levels have been changed, the science proficiency levels have been changed, so we want to keep you up on that. But I am happy to report, we're wrapping up FCAT season, testing season. Our teachers, our principals, our students, we think have responded well the last couple of weeks. We're in Week Two. We're also in the midst of end-of-course exams, and that will take place in the next couple of weeks. So what we hear from the schools is that it's going quite well, going real well. We do expect to receive FCAT and EOC end-of-course exam results in the next few weeks, next coming months, in elementary and middle school grades, as usual, this summer, and then the high school grades next fall, next winter. But we've assembled our team here just to share with you. To my left, Dr. Gell, who's the Division Director for Teaching and Learning, will share a little bit about the school improvement process, the ongoing continuous improvement model. As you mentioned, it's a moving target, so the days of having a static school improvement plan are really over, and that doesn't really work. That model doesn't work. So we use the more, the prevalent, the continuous improvement model, as we have to change and ebb and flow to the new requirements, that literally if you wrote your school improvement plan last fall, it would be a very different target or goal that you may have to reset for now with the new school accountability measures. So that's exactly right. Stu Greenberg, who's our Director of School Accountability, will share strategies, what the district's doing, what the schools are doing, as it relates to these issues, professional development, curriculum design, support, the things at the district as we're trying to respond ongoing to these new issues. And then Mrs. Gregory, Gillian Gregory, who's our new Director of Testing, Research, and Evaluation. And as you know, our friend Paul Felch just retired recently, and he gave you this update yearly for many years. And so we welcome Gillian to the panel this year. But with that, we'll start with Gillian, just to share with you some of the more impactful changes that we think would be good for you to be aware of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Madam Chair, School Board Members, thank you for allowing us to come this evening before you to share some of the important changes that will affect school grades for the 2012-13 school year. We received this information from the Technical Assistance Workshop that was held at DOE on March 21st. And to your point, we are, we are under the auspices of the State Board of Education, and so at any point in time, should they make a decision on a rule or how grades are calculated through public hearing, a notice could change. And so, yes. But at this point, this is what we know to be the landscape of school grades for this school year. So as you are aware, there are three basic elements of school grades. The first is student test performance, and that's what we know students are able to know and do at the proficient level, and that's a level three, four, or five on the reading math, or math FCAT. The next column is the learning gains column, and that essentially identifies the percentage of students who are increasing in their achievement level, maintaining at their achievement level, that satisfactory at a three or higher, or remaining at below a satisfactory achievement level, but showing growth, more than expected growth. And then the third component is the learning gains of the bottom 25% at a school site. And essentially, what that does is identifies their learning gains in that specific group of students, as defined by maintaining, growing, or exceeding below proficiency level. It's also important to note that in that third column, extra weighting is awarded to students in the lowest 25% who show greater-than-expected gains. And so that weighting is calculated as part of their school grade. As Mr. Crowe referenced, and as you may recall, in 2011-12, we had over 40 school grade change calculations in our school grades. These changes included replacing FCAT math with 2.0 with algebra for high school students, establishing a writing standard, and then readjusting it in the spring, determining reading and math proficiency with new cut scores, eliminating from school grade calculations the growth of the lowest 25%, and implementing a safety net so that schools could only drop one letter grade in the 11-12 school year. As mentioned, DOE announced that there are approximately 20 changes for this school year. Included in these changes is the move to resetting the FCAT writing standard, it is now a 3.5, allowing school grades to drop more than one letter grade. And it's important to know that in this school year, for the 12-13 school year, there is now a reading threshold requirement, which says that any school that is at the 25th percentile or below in reading proficiency will automatically lose a letter grade.
That's weak. I'm sorry.
For, so to repeat, I'm sorry, I was unclear. For the 2012-13 school year, there is now a new reading threshold implemented. And what that says is that any school that has fewer than 25% of their students who are proficient in reading will automatically have their letter grade dropped by one. And so...
Proficient is 3.5?
Reading is three and above, yes.
Okay.
Science FCAT 2.0 is implemented with new cut scores. And the rules on calculating graduation rates have changed. Beginning in the 2012-13 school year, students who earn a special diploma will be counted as a non-graduate and will count against a high school's overall and potentially at-risk graduation rate. Industry certifications, industry certifications are now a component of the middle school grade. What is important to note on this component is that the scores earned by the students will be banked for one year. So for example, a student is earning an industry certification in 12-13, it will not be applied until the school year 13-14.
I'm just curious, I should not ask why, should I? I will say, why? What did they say?
Because the reporting, the DOE's position is that the reporting mechanism for industry certifications does not occur until after the middle school grades are calculated. So in order for them to calculate the grade in which, I'm sorry, to calculate the points in which the year is earned, the middle school grades would have to be shifted back to follow the high school grading calendar and would be released in December. So because industry certifications aren't reported until July, but middle school grades are released in June, they're going to bank them for one year and apply them in the subsequent school year.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we going to do questions as we go through?
I'm sorry. Is that what you all prefer, we do questions as we go along?
Sure.
Yes, so, yes. Please. Mr. Van Camp?
Couple, just a couple things that you mentioned. On the first page, where it states that students move to a higher level than, or make greater-than-expected gains. Who or what sets the expected gain?
This Department of Education.
They set the expected gain for our, each individual student?
In the calculation of grade, for the purposes of calculating grades, yes. School grades.
So Forrest Van Camp's expected gain would be this, as defined by the state, based on, do they know who I am, what I've done?
Their previous data?
So it's rushed right back to the previous?
Where they have a data point for you, yes.
Okay. And we, as a district, had no choice. If they said the, let's say, past data, my gain, other words, this was my home base. Just to make it simple, my expected gain was 10. And I was only capable of going 5. Who at DOE sets, how do they know that without knowing the individual child? I know you may not know the answer, but just, how can they set a gain for an individual student? Or is it a profile of students, a class of students?
Probably.
It's a little, it's yes, yes, and yes. It's a complicated formula. It comes out of the Assessment Bureau at DOE, and it's calculating how students are expected to perform, given their previous demonstrated abilities.
So it's more like a, instead of an individual child's, these, it's more like a robotic entity, more of, which, I don't want to go into, just when you say expected gains, I would think that it would be the teacher's staff or an IEP committee or someone who set an expected gains. But we're saying that our kids got to fit the state mold of what, and it's a universal calculation based on the state of Florida.
Yes. In the learning gains column, that is...
And I compare the kids in a richer county and the kids in a poorer county, maybe run through the same mill. Okay, you know, I think you can get where I'm coming from on that. Now, on the special diploma, a little bit more, this is not special needs kids, special diploma, attendance diploma, or what?
Because of the SEA waiver in Florida, we are required to use the federal uniform graduation rate definition. And that is only, a standard diploma is the only diploma that is acceptable or counts as a graduate for the purposes of calculating graduation rates.
A standard diploma?
Diploma.
And standard diploma is defined by the state, feds?
The state defines what a standard diploma is, and it's the 24 credit or accelerated option. One of the three options that we have available as far as a standard diploma is concerned.
Special diplomas will be issued to kids who have special needs, and they're going to be considered a dropout now, so every special need kid is going to hurt a high school.
Mm-hmm. That would be right.
How dumb can they get?
That would be right.
If I could, Madam Chair, Mr. Van Camp, this was a real concern the other day with the governor, the superintendent from Escambia brought this up again, like, and also related to ESC center schools, about grading of those children as far as with the same type of calculations that we would do with every child in the district. And one of the things I did at the State Board, you know, that when I talked about this, is that, and Malcolm Thomas did a much better job, is that we're really missing the boat when it comes to this, because there needs to be a different type of testing, a different type of criteria. And whatever you set it at, if you set it fairly, we would be at one of the highest levels, because if you look at Gretchen Everhart, there's not a better school in the state. If you look at the needs and what they're doing for the students, and to think that we're grading that school the same way we're grading other schools in our district, there's something real wrong with this, because it's not giving them the opportunity, the credit that they deserve for what they're doing and for how those kids are performing. So this is a real issue. And Superintendent's latest last week brought it up to the governor, the concern on this. So I think you're really on to something that we all share.
I know, it's just, and then just one final question, and I'll move on. So what you went over so far with the rules for public schools? Does the same rules, same requirements apply to charter schools?
For the charter schools that are graded, they do apply. There are some minimum cell size requirements. For example, there must be at least 10 students enrolled in a particular grade in order to trigger a school grade component. So if there's a charter school that has a smaller population of students, then they would not be, but they fall under the umbrella of the school grading.
So if they played the rule charter schools would not admit any special needs kids? And you're, I'll make this as a statement, charter schools will not be issuing and admitting special needs kids. They will milk the formula in terms of their admittance as to who they take, so that they fit the state formula. Again, part of the manufactured crisis.
And the enrollments would also be kept at a certain level, too, also, the charter schools?
The charter, I don't know that, I just don't have the expertise to speak to charter school enrollments. They are under the school grading requirements that we are under as a public school system.
Thank you.
Okay. My questions are not directed at y'all personally, you know.
I think they're not that.
With that, it's just, you know, the, just some...
Just part of our learning style, Mr. Van Camp, it's all right.
If I don't make some comments, I'm just going to blow up. But let me relieve a little stress and pressure. But that's it. Thank you.
Of course. And then the state has provided some impact data to us based on some of their analysis at the state level. And what that data looks like is that by implementing the writing change to 3.5 from 3.0, essentially, on average, schools lose about 30 points in their school grade calculations. For student, for students in fifth grade, 48% of students are expected to score at the level one or two level. At eighth grade, 53% are expected to score at the level one or two level. And level one or two is the, is not the proficient level. Three, fours, and fives are proficient. Biology, one test takers, 41%. The impact of the cut scores indicate that 41% will be at level one or two, and 45% in geometry for the end-of-course, and those two last are the end-of-course exam classes. And so potentially, in aggregate, taken together, these changes may affect as much as one-third of our schools losing a letter grade by simple rule changes, by the implementation of some of the cut scores that were voted on.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask a brief question? Just to clarify, and I apologize, because this is, like I said, it's been such a moving target with so many different sets of data, and grades for teachers, and evaluations in schools, and kids, and didn't we not only increase the cut scores, but also increase the level of difficulty in the test at the same time? Is that right on this?
So by moving to FCAT 2.0, that is a more rigorous assessment?
So it's a more rigorous assessment, and the cut score is higher? That's what I just want to make sure, okay?
Yes.
Okay.
As Mr. Crowe mentioned, understanding the impact of this data is critical. Dr. Gell is going to be discussing our systematic and systemic approach to supporting our schools with these changes.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hopefully I'll be able to speak. I apologize, my sinuses are draining. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Superintendent Potts, Madam Chair, School Board Members, members of the leadership team, thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for your visionary leadership in the school improvement process. As you know, school improvement is not a once-a-year activity that the schools embark upon, it's something that's done on a continuous basis. As you know, under your leadership, we've implemented a system of continuous improvement for many, many years, and that's helped to make, ensure that we are a high-performing district. Our schools work hard with their stakeholders, their communities of learners, to develop, review, and approve a school improvement plan. That's then bought before you, after the developers in our department, in the Division of Teaching and Learning, they have looked at the school improvement plans, the strategies, the materials, everything, the targets that they have set, to make sure that we're moving forward in a positive way. And then it's reviewed and approved by you. It's updated as needed. It's not written in the fall and then put on the shelf. It is a living and breathing document. We take pride in sharing information on a consistent basis with our school leaders and with the school community as to the changes that we are faced with. I apologize.
No problem.
That information is developed and shared with district school leaders on a continuous basis, and with your continued leadership and support, we'll continue to move forward, even with these changes that are bought before us by the Florida Department of Education. And with that being said, so that you don't have to listen to my scratchy voice anymore, I'm going to turn it over to Stu Greenberg.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Superintendent. What I want to do is take you through some of the responses that the district has been providing and working with principals and teachers with this year. I think it's important, before I tell you about our response, and the Superintendent said this, when accountability is raised, teachers rise to these new levels, but they only do it because of the commitment of principals and themselves as teachers in setting aside precious time for professional development. And I think first we start with the commitment that the principals and the leadership team in this district have to ensuring that principals have the knowledge, and principals provide time for teachers to learn and understand these changes. For instance, in writing, if we think about writing, as Ms. Gregory said, the state increased from three to 3.5, the score that's needed for proficiency. When the state did that, they instituted a new scoring process. And so the rubric, the kind of writing that students are going to have to do, the way that that's judged is now different. And so we have to take teachers, and we did take teachers through Liz Greenberg and Kathy Quarter, and they met with teachers and team leaders, they had to teach them a whole new scoring process. And so this is the first time that the state has provided training to districts on what type of scoring is used by the scorers behind the scenes. So first, we had to teach teachers what this new standard was. Then we had to teach teachers how to refine what they're currently doing, and at the same time, to have the confidence in what they've learned thus far. And so principals had to set aside time for people to learn rubrics, to look at student work, to plan curriculum, as teachers spent the summer planning, and now they had to go back and make changes. And so tremendous effort has gone into understanding the new scoring process, which then leads to a new score in writing. And professional development has been provided to each school on the scoring process, on how to deepen writing. We've also taken the very few resources we have in the district and the curriculum developers, and they have worked side-by-side with teachers and principals, coaching teachers through lessons and helping to co-develop and develop lessons at elementary, middle, and high school. And so writing alone, as Ms. Gregory said, it's possible that a school might lose anywhere from 30 points or more by having a new scoring rubric and a new standard. And so remember that each year, as Florida rights is done, we then start teaching the grade level below, not just the writing process, but the kinds of things that scorers might take into account. So all of that reteaching process was ongoing, as teachers themselves and principals were learning and working very diligently. The secondary was reading. Mr. Rasmussen, as you said, the difference between FCAT 1 and FCAT 2.0 was felt last year for the first time. We now have cut scores that are similar across third grade through high school. Before, we would see third grade have extraordinarily high scores, and then it appeared that the longer students stayed in the school system...
The worse they got.
The worse they got. And so for 12 years, we had an unequal achievement setting. Now we have the same, but what's occurred is that in reading, the difference between FCAT 1 and FCAT 2.0 is the level of questions, inference. And so we've been working with principals in their monthly meetings, showing video clips of what a style of teaching would look like that leads to a more interactive inference level type of instruction. We've also been working out in the schools to make sure that teachers understand this difference. And aside from just understanding the difference, it's then, again, having the confidence in what you've done well and learning something new. And at the same time, the Superintendent has been a vocal leader in this state, asking the Department of Education, can we please know the readability of the reading test? It's an unknown. And so the teachers, and again, the principals, so the principal has to set aside time for English teachers or language arts teachers at a middle and high school to learn a new rubric and a new scoring process. Those same teachers are now altering the way that they teach reading. We're also including, through this board and the Superintendent's leadership, at middle and high school, we have instituted Achieve 3000, which provides intensive reading support through computerized and differentiated reading supports for students. And again, the principals and leaders in the schools have learned to use this new program to read the reports. At the same time, they're altering what they teach. So it's been a very busy year for principals and teachers and curriculum developers in the district, just in those two areas. And then when we look at mathematics, it's the same thing. In the area of math, at the elementary and middle school level, you have teachers that have to know and understand the math item specifications at a different level. Superintendent, again, has been a vocal in asking the department with our algebra test, can we please get an item analysis? Because through the leadership of Scotty and our curriculum developers and high school principals, we're going to be offering an intensive algebra program, but we need to have the state give us the exact results that students get on items, so that we can start quickly. And so we have altered the way that teachers understand how mathematics needs to be paced to cover all of the benchmarks by the needed time, and we have to deepen the way that algebra is taught, and at the same time remediate it. And so it's been a very busy year in the area of mathematics with the two math curriculum developers that we have out into the schools. And again, principals have set aside time for teachers to understand these item specifications, to come together, develop lesson plans. It's been a great effort on the part of the district.
Stu, why do you think we're getting the pushback? Because we pushed DOE on that very, because the problem is, and I know the board understands this, if a child has mastered a certain area of algebra, you know, rather than go back, we're reteaching the whole, you know, every strand, everything we've got, and if we had those individual components, then we could drill down on what they really need. Why are we getting a pushback, you think, on that from DOE?
I think the department is trying to safeguard people teaching to a test, but one of the things that they don't understand is without giving information, and what you have are teachers in schools that are testing to a test, because you're trying to pinpoint this elusiveness of information. And what's interesting to note is that at fourth, eighth, and 10th grade, we do receive from the Department of the area of writing, the actual student response with a score on it. But yet, when it comes to something like algebra, where we ask for an item analysis, so when a student comes to intensive summer math academy for Algebra 1, we'll know exactly what they did well on and what they need more support. And the same would be said about reading. You think about students that can read in this district, and they read well, but for some reason, they're having difficulty in doing well as a graduation requirement for FCAT. We need to know what the level of the test is, and what the students do well, and what do we need to do differently? And I think this is even more important now when you look at VAM scores. Teachers need to understand the depth of knowledge. What kinds of questions can students understand? And then lastly, science. I just wanted to touch on science, because it was in December when the State Board set the cut scores for FCAT 2.0. And so along with them setting a new standard that shouldn't alter greatly how students have done, but what it alters greatly is teachers understanding what needs to be taught at what level. And so that was accepted by the State Board in December as a cut score. And now we had to go back in at the elementary and middle school level with FCAT 2.0 science, and have them begin to understand a new level of com- and have them begin to understand a new level of complexity, different kinds of standards, and how they would be measured at the same time that they're teaching. And every day that I was in schools, literally every day, two to three schools a day, and I have to tell you, each time I would get into my car to go to the next school, I was so proud to be part of Leon County Public Schools. For the, I mean, I'll get a tear, I'm going to cry now, because the teachers are teaching during the day. They're counseling and working with children before and after school, as are the administrators. And now we're saying to them, you need to be a learner on top of that, of new standards, revise your pacing, understand and teach at a higher level, and at the same time differentiate what you do. What the teachers and administrators and the leadership team in this county do on a daily basis is amazing.
That's great.
It's amazing work.
Ms. Lewis Butler, then Ms. Rasmussen.
Thank you all for this input that you're bringing to us this evening. I was, the principals and the teachers got all this training. What about the students and the parents?
Well, I think two things have occurred. The schools have had outreach to parents about changes, and we've spoken to district advisory about changes. And the students, again, I think the caring compassionate side of great educators is that they don't let students feel the change. And that's, again, when I go into classrooms each and every day, and you see the caring, loving nature and the expertise of teachers, they're not letting kids feel tomorrow's the day, you've got to do great, or, you know, they're going after this in a way that is compassionate, calm, well-thought-out. And that, I really believe that's the leadership of the superintendent, the leadership team and the principals are setting the tone. Good things happen when we teach well and we understand our targets.
I like to say to the State Department, no schools should be graded. No schools should be graded because we're still going through experimental stages. So we're not ready to be graded. If they drop the letter grade, it's not fair. And because of the fact that with all this data, we have to have pre, I believe in pre and post tests, and we can't even get a pre, a post test. There's a lot of pre tests of what happened this year, so no school should be graded. So I have, I need to be at the bottom of, down there, okay? And FCAT 1, FCAT 2, readability, Superintendent Pons did a great job. I've been reading about the superintendent every day down at the Capitol and the readability act for the test, reading test. Because of, I'm skipping away with the science because I'm a science teacher, I always told them, send me a child that can read, that I can teach science. And talk about the level of science, we had, when I taught school here, they had sixth grade general science, seventh grade life science, eighth grade physical science. So we have levels. So when they get to high school, environmental science, biology 1, biology 2, they're ready. But they won't be ready if they can't read true. And mathematics, you said the item of analysis of math, crucial.
Yes, ma'am.
That is so important. Because if you don't understand the basis of math, you're not going to understand geometry, calculus, or algebra. You're not going to understand any of those because you have to first understand the basis. And I applaud you about how to pace math. That's very important. Okay. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Rasmussen, then Mr. Van Camp, please.
I'm just going to follow up on what Mr. Greenberg was saying about how we've expected and required and asked our teachers and administrators to learn a new way of assessment, understanding how that assessment tool or the rubric works, figuring out how to plan and design a curriculum to reach that rubric, and then figuring out how to implement it. And I was just curious, how much more money did we get to implement all this training?
None to my knowledge. It's been...
None? Really?
Oh, my God.
So all these video clips and all this curriculum design, all this professional development that we're getting and doing, and we're asking our teachers, they're coming in early to help kids get ready, and they're coming, staying late in the afternoon. And when do they go to this training? During...
We have tried very hard not to pull teachers out during the day.
Oh, okay.
And they have dedicated their time before school, after school, coming to half-day workshops rather than full-day workshops when we do have an opportunity to work with teachers.
And they've been compensated how exactly?
Is that still being discussed downtown, compensation?
Anyway, my point, you know, I think obviously, we all understand that here, but I just wanted to compliment, really, I was being a little tongue-in-cheek there, but I do want to compliment the superintendent and the administration, and certainly our teachers and our principals who are tirelessly working and advocating and trying to do this, not only without a pay raise, but without even being compensated for these additional, I don't know where you found the money to provide the training resources and to do the extra help for professional development that we desperately need in order to accomplish this, but I'm grateful for your creativity and the obvious brain trust that we have sitting before us. And I'm chair.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Van Camp.
Yeah, just along that point. I know that it's not the county and the state of Florida that has four people like you.
Pull his mic around down, please.
And we're fortunate to have just the dedication, the knowledge that the four of you have and what you've shown here tonight, because I can tell, there's a lot of story that hadn't been told behind what all this went on, and I, and just the dedication of our teachers and our faculty, we, you know, it's just, it makes you hurt to know they've got to go through this after they, they deserve so much more, and our kids do too, you know, with this. Just another point, too, just on the math, an observation just with my grandson, whose reading level is out the kazoo, whose math skills are on the other end. But just, if it wasn't for his reading skills, he is surviving some of the word problems, the tests taking, the other things, because he knows how to break it down and do things. He actually works them backwards. He'll take the answers and fit them in and eliminate the ones that don't fit, you know? It's his reasoning process because, isn't it? But I think about the kids that math is, let's say, easy for them, they understand solving an equation, but when you hide that into a complicated word problem about Saint Moritz and a light tower and a manatee and all this peripheral stuff they put into these questions, you know, sometime if your reading level is not there, you know, I don't think we're getting, and some of our math scores, we're getting almost some answers commensurate with their reading level, it's the reading level that's, in fact, they're skipping it or guessing, you know? With that. Then one, I know it's all under the State Board of Education, and my memory slips, it's going real fast these days. What is the entity within the Department of Education? Is it still the FCAT Testing Center? Is there, what is the name of the group now, their latest name that's doing all the...
The Test Development Center?
Test Development Center. That's their current name with that. And this group, and I think Superintendent knows where I'm headed with this.
I'm afraid.
Are we their fiscal agent, Mr. Van Camp?
We are their fiscal agent. And so at our workshop, I would like to discuss how many positions they have, how much it's costing us, how much it's costing our district to buy this misery that we're delivering upon themselves. Maybe it's time they seek another fiscal agent. I know why they're fiscal agent here, because several years ago, the folks in the Department of Education didn't have the guts to ask the legislature for 30 positions. So maybe it's time they have, if they really want to do this in DOE, they'll go back and ask the legislature, give us 30 positions or we can't do this. So by perpetuating this fiscal agent role we have with them, we're perpetuating the misery across the whole state. So I think it's time to go looking for a home. So why don't we discuss this at our workshop?
All right, it's on the agenda. Mr. Crowe, then Ms. Rasmussen.
In the essence of time, I'll echo my board members' comments, along with their sarcasm as well. And just want to thank the four of you, the folks that are working with you and the superintendent for your creativity and the complexity, I get it, of all of this. And, you know, you say we're going to do a leadership training, you know, this summer, and those are for teachers, and those trainings, you know, as DeeDee said, where are we getting the money from? Well, we're not getting any money, but it's, we're just trying to make things work and fix things together. And I know you guys must have a bunch of Band-Aids in your offices and in your cars, and you're just putting Band-Aids here and there. I just want you to know as one board member that I appreciate what you're doing. And Paul would be proud of you. Please know that we expect you to not get any sleep when the test scores come in. We expect to get a call from you first before we hear anything from anybody else, so get some sleep and be prepared when those test scores come back. But I know that Paul will be proud of you and the presentation, and he's missed tonight.
Yes, he is.
It was always a neat time to have Paul come in.
It is.
And I never thought that there'd be another person that would be able to articulate.
Oh, I...
He just, you guys know it, again, I'm preaching to the choir, he knew everything, but you're going to do great. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to preach a little bit more?
Well, I just had a quick...
I apologize for preaching.
That's okay. We're all going to take a text in a minute. Go ahead.
And I do want to, I really think we need to compliment our esteemed panel here for the great restraint that they've exhibited by not engaging in our banter of cynicism or frustration. They've been professional and very restrained, and I know that, we appreciate that. But my question I just have to ask is, are we seeing any difference at the DOE in philosophical approach with the new commissioner? And I don't mean to point fingers, I'm just saying, are we expecting a change in the near future?
Maybe I better ask. Well, I don't want to...
I'm not touching that.
Yeah, I saw that look. I want to, First Commissioner Bennett, he came out to our superintendent's roundtable. He was willing to take any question that was given to him. He sat down in front of 44 superintendents the other day, and he took any of the questions that we were able to give him. So I think, I had a meeting with him, in fact, Rocky and I met with him up at his office with Stevie Feller. We went up and saw him, and he was willing to sit down. He probably took 45 minutes, so access, I see a big improvement, listening, big improvement, willing to talk and discuss issues. So I think we need to give him credit for that, and I think it's a different approach. Eric Smith had a lot of intelligence, and Eric Smith, I thought, did a very good job in doing them. Gerard came in, he had his strengths. One of the, we've had quite a few commissioners, you know, if you think about it, we've had almost three commissioners in three years, but I think Commissioner Bennett's doing everything he can. One of the things I'm concerned about is the information that you heard tonight, when you're talking about a third of your schools could possibly lose school grades as a result of these changes, even if we score at the same level or higher level, is how we communicate this out to the public to make sure that parents are informed, that, I know our principals are informed, but that's one of the reasons I wanted to have this workshop, is to get it out so parents would know that there's going to be a different set of school grades coming, there's going to be a different set of scores. And again, this could change next year again, every year it's changed, and that's one of the things I'm talking about and encouraging other superintendents and board members, whatever you decide to do, let's leave it in place for a few years. And we haven't even talked about Common Core, you know, tonight, or going into the park. That would be another whole, we talked a little bit about it earlier, but, you know, Stu can talk to you about that, and Michelle, and Scotty, and Jillian, that's another whole issue as far as the expectations on scores related to park and others. And we're just dealing with what we're dealing with, and I mean, I'm still battling the FCAT, let's move away from that. And now we're talking about going to park, and we're talking about going to Common Core, so there's a lot of challenges. And I just want to make sure, any ideas the board members have for us to communicate this out to the public, we're certainly willing to listen, and we really believe in communication because I'm not sure everybody is aware of all these changes that are coming down for this school year.
Madam Chair, I might, just very briefly, that's exactly why I keep mentioning this moving target.
Oh, yeah.
You know, because I think it's really critical for everybody to understand that this, we may, we might not need to have a complete stroke over all of this, and that's why I asked about the new commissioner. There's, the legislature has taken a deep breath on some of the graduation standards, as we talked about earlier tonight. You know, you see this continuing to change, and I think the hue and cry that we felt and exhibited up there has been effective, and that's good, and they're listening, and that's great. So the other thing, though, I'll tell you, I remember before I ever, way back when, before I ever got on the school board, I remember thinking the FCAT was going to be a huge issue when it first came up. The first time I ever heard about the FCAT came up in a Sunday school class as a prayer concern from the parents, because the next day, the next week was going to be the FCAT. But, you know, I think our parents, you know, this is an informed community, thank goodness, where we live, and our parents understand and they see this, but you're right about the communication plan. I just want to say, if there's a way for us to communicate that it is a moving target, let's not get too upset.
Right.
Yet, let's, you know, try to, we're just doing the best we can to manage under the circumstances we've inherited. We're going to keep pushing for those changes in the legislative process and with the DOE to get to a consistent place that everybody can live with, and then push to try to keep it there as a target we can hit and stay at for some length of time.
Good, Madam Chair.
Yes.
One of the things I didn't mention that I thought the commissioner deserves some credit for is on the parent trigger bill, is, you know, he took the position that the decision to appeal, like if you're a failing school, should go back to the local school board versus going to the state board. You know, that was one of the things he talked about, and I really respected that because I believe in local control. And I think if you're going, not that I'm a big believer at all in the parent trigger bill, because I'm not, you know, and I think it serves another purpose, but I won't spend a lot of time talking about that. But if there's any type of bill in place, that there needs to be an appeal regarding whether you're going to keep a school open or whether you're going to change leadership, that should go to the local superintendent and the local school board.
Agreed.
It has no business at the state board, as far as I'm concerned. And so I did appreciate that, pushing it back to more local control.
And thank you for mentioning that, Mrs. Superintendent, Ms. Lewis Butler.
Yeah, I want to add to that. I was at the Florida School Board breakfast, and I met Mr. Bennett there, and one thing he said in his speech was that he was new, as we already know, but he's, the main thing I like when he said, "I'm willing to listen and learn." So that's important to me, that he's approachable and that you can call down there to the Department of Education, because he's willing to listen and learn. So we can check him out on that.
Any other comments from the pulpit?
Ma'am.
Let me just thank Mrs. Superintendent Team Leon for the outstanding job that they are doing in keeping all of this information and bringing it to us. The impact of this is very critical to everything we do, and we're certainly glad that you're the experts out there to make certain that our teachers and our principals are informed, and you come and talk to us, and we thank you very much for that. So enough being said, is there a motion that we adjourn?
So be it.